I think we'll go ahead and get started. And I'll go over the agenda in the sequence that I think we're doing it. First off is update from Danielle Brown and Sarah Hartstein. Then next up is Brian Lee and Dave Busby, EOC status. And then third is review EOC financials. George Looney and Don Dale, I think, are handling that. And then the Ignite Wellness Program, Jesus, and maybe Tracy. And then at 11 o'clock, Kate Porsche has two items, the Business Loan Program and the CDVG Grant. So if we're ready, let's go ahead and start with Danielle and Sarah.
Commissioner, we should do introductions.
Okay. Introductions. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Lance Dorni, County Counsel.
Annabelle, how do you mean, Commissioner?
Okay.
Would you like me to respond to her?
George Looney, Public Works Finance Manager.
Public Health Office.
Okay.
Don Dale, Sheriff's Office.
Zan O'Shawne, Commissioner.
Teresa Farley, Board of Staff.
Greg Riddler, Sheriff's Office.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
Okay, we had Greg Riddler from the Sheriff's Office. And then who else was checking in then?
Danielle Brown from Health Department.
Okay.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Mariott Lee, right now.
Okay.
Sarah Hartstein, Health Department.
Okay, and I see here they're a little from Corrales City Council. And I think that... Good morning. I think that's everybody I see.
There's Julie Arena, did she?
Julie Arena from Benton County Health Department.
Okay. All right.
Brian Lee, Emergency Manager.
Good morning. All right, if that's everybody, let's go ahead and get started from Danielle Brown and Sarah Hartstein.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Malone. So the EOC has been busy this week. We are operationalizing some of the plans that we've been working on for the last few weeks, specifically the hotel motel sheltering planning and moving that process forward. In addition to the access to the fairgrounds for RV and car camping, we're operationalizing that plan as well. We essentially have the mass sheltering plan completed, and we'll get that to Brian for EOC review, Brian and Dave Busby for EOC review. The behavioral health plan continues to be working with PIO and JEC to get that information out with some other things that have come up this week that have been slowed a little bit just because of other priorities that have come up with the PIO and JEC team. We are, we have the overflow plan completed. Charlie is off today, but we'll be working on operationalizing the communicable disease and epidemiology plan next week and giving some specific data around the reopening plan to help support the reopening plan that the EOC will be developing as well. Sarah?
I don't have anything to add.
All right. Do we have any questions for Danielle or Sarah? Just to comment, it's nice on the, that we actually can get plans completed and talking about the mass shelter plan, because it's always easy to add new items, and it's nice to know that occasionally something might drop off or drop down the priority list. So that is good news. Zan?
I did have one question for Danielle and Sarah, and that is whether we have any more information about whether the initial results from the TRACE study are going to be reported week by week, or whether they're going to report them at the end of the four-week period all at once. I know that Health Department will get some results sooner if they're any positives, because there will be need to follow up, but curious about how information will be flowing.
As I understand, and I may be speaking a little bit out of term, but as I understand, we will get notified as those test results, positive and negative, come in, because both have to be tracked from the public health side. I don't know what the plan overall is for the study response to be coming out in terms of public information release, but I know that the public health will be notified as the test results come in. I talked with Charlie late yesterday afternoon, and we have not received any of those initial results yet. We were expecting them late this week or early next week in terms of the first tests that have been done.
Okay, I had, yeah, we heard yesterday on call with Samaritan folks that their turnaround time for results is about 36 to 48 hours now, but it sounds like Willamette Valley Toxicology is still not up to speed to turn around that quickly.
My interpretation of that conversation with Samaritan yesterday was specific to inpatient testing results, not outpatient, so perhaps I misunderstood that, but that was how I interpreted that.
Any other questions for Health Department folks? Thank you for your efforts, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you again very soon. So next up is EOC status, Brian Lee, and I'm not sure if Dave Busby is with us at this point, but I know, take it away, Brian.
Morning, folks. So just a couple updates on the EOC side. We're continuing looking at our staffing patterns here for the next few weeks. That, I'm sorry, Danielle and Sarah all kind of touched on it already, and Charlie did about 10 too. We're really focused on operationalizing our plan, particularly the reopening plan. And again, it's so rough draft, because we don't have guidance from the Governor's Office. And our rough, I won't ever say dates or timelines yet, because we're still unclear, but the shortest version there is that, once we have the Governor's guidance, Pierre and I are going to work very rapidly to produce a reviewable rough draft, and then try to get more metrics from Public Health if OHA gives guidance, and really start pushing this plan forward so we can conceptualize what we're going to be looking at here over the next few months. So no dates defined of that at all, just general loose timeline of we're really going to move this forward aggressively, so we can have a lot of discussion around it, incorporate changes, and really formalize it in that way. Other than that, EOC operations here are going smoothly. It kind of waxes and wanes. It got a little bit quiet here for a minute this week, and now we've ramped up again, looking at all these plans coming, like trying to mobilize contact tracing to support public health, how we're going to, we're getting a lot of donations of hand sanitizer from a couple of the local distilleries, as well as HP, so we're going to really want to push that as public messaging. And then as businesses reopen, our plan is to help them with hand sanitizer. So we're figuring out what that's going to look like and just kind of drafting out plans and ideas. So again, it looked like it was dying down for a minute here earlier this week, and now it's starting to ramp back up again. So I think we're going to be doing this regularly, off and on, week to week, day to day, where it looks like it's going to be quiet, and then we're going to get new guidance if things are going to change. The last thing there is that the state changed their PPE allocation process again, so that's just constantly in flux and creating a lot of work for us, and a lot of questions that we're constantly changing and revising all the time. Dentist offices, I believe, are allowed to reopen starting tomorrow if they have adequate PPE, and they did a lot of donating of supplies early on when the state asked for them, so we're trying to do our best to find out what those asks are, assess reasonableness, and then try to get them what they need while also balancing the needs of our healthcare sector and the projections and risk that we are facing here moving forward. So it's really a balancing act, we're really working on it, and the PPE Allocation Committee is talking via email to help resolve some of these issues. So a lot going on.
Any questions for Brian? I've got one. You mentioned the dentists, and it seems like, once we get into May, which is, starts tomorrow, things are changing. I know we were on a call last week with the State Parks Director and talking about potential for State Parks opening up for day use, and dentists and doctors restrictions being loosened up slightly. So I assume, Brian, we can look forward to more changes as we get into May a little bit?
Yes, and that's kind of generally what we're hearing on a lot of the state calls. There's a lot of questions and a lot of just general guidance without much follow-up. So we're really trying to get more clear answers so we can give good guidance to our local providers. But yes, they're opening different things up. I know Good Sam is looking at elective surgeries, elective procedures again, so they're assessing PPE. Sort of everyone's in the same boat of looking at what this is going to be like here in the next few weeks here into May, with no real clear definition of when Phase One starting or anything like that. So we're all sort of in that rapid prepare and coordinate phase.
Annabelle?
Yeah, I know that some of the clinics and doctors' offices are going to visual appointments, and that's going to be going on for at least another month in terms of, I personally have got my appointments changed, and they're saying at the same time that they're going to be visual rather than in clinic visits. So at least the clinics are still going to be planning on remaining closed as far as I can tell.
They said they were going to open, some of them potentially, starting in the next week or two, but that they would probably start ramping up very slowly. That's what they talked about yesterday on the call, and they might start out with maybe a quarter of their visits in person and just do it, using triage appointment by appointment.
Yes, that's kind of what guidance I had heard as well, they were going to go warm up into this opening, do it at lower capacity, try to assess things on need, or how long people put things off, and sort of piece it together as they go. There's not 100% clear guidance from anyone yet.
And the other part of the equation is try things out, whether it's the State Parks or doctors' offices, and try something for two weeks and see if there are more cases, if there are negative consequences to what's been done, and if there are, then we dial it back and, because this is definitely not a, getting back to business as usual anytime, anytime soon. So I've heard a couple comments, try it for two weeks, and I think as we get into May, we'll get more information on testing and have a better idea where we're at as far as the general population, but...
Commissioner Malone, I'd like to interject.
Okay. Joe?
Commissioners, I would like to identify, there's actually two different reopening plans that we'll be focused on. The first one is the one that Brian just referenced, and that is the plan that will be done in conjunction with the Governor's direction that we're waiting on next week. And that's really the reopening of the community, if you will, in Benton County. There's also another process that's underway by our Executive Committee at the county, looking at county government services and reopening of our facilities, so there's also that plan as well. So community reopening, and then the county facility organization reopening. So know that there's two parallel paths, and we will be making sure that they are in sync with one another.
And I think coordination so that our message is as clear as it can be. Thinking about the parks, people, for the most part, don't care whether it's a state park, or a county park, or a city park, they just know it's a park, and hopefully, or a federal park. And it is important that we are as coordinated as we can be. I know some counties are more anxious to get things open like now than others, and so we need to be mindful of the message and that coordination on dates and that sort of thing.
Yeah, a question for Zan, have you had any more conversations with Will Tucker? Not directly, but I've been on calls with him, and they are definitely slowing down, especially after the incidents at National Frozen Foods. So they are, yesterday on the health call, he mentioned the date of May 11th, so they're going to take their time, and they, I think the Commissioners have realized that they need to listen to their public health folks.
Well...
That's good to hear.
Well, and I think some of the more rural counties say, well, we don't have any known cases, or we don't have very many, and it's, part of it is lack of testing, and you may not know what's out there. And so I see May as a time to get a lot of, get our testing ramped up and have a clearer picture of what the situation really is. Don't see any other questions for Brian. Be looking forward to your next update, and it seems like as we go along, we get better organized and have more information to help guide us. So thank you.
Brian, this is Joe Kirby. Would you like to share with the board the approval that I think we've received from FEMA regarding some reimbursement?
Yes, so Danielle kind of alluded to it, and just to highlight it, sorry, I can't, I never can keep straight on who I told you I have right now. We did receive approval for the non-congregate sheltering ask that we had put in, and that was utilizing some of the hotel motel recommendations per the Health Department. So we did get approval for that. So what that means is that some of our costs basically associated with lodging those individuals and food, wraparound services are not covered, are at this point considered FEMA reimbursable, so we are able to move forward with that. Another piece that we should be aware of that we got approval in that is utilizing the fairgrounds and getting some reimbursement back for the fees, as long as the fairgrounds is charging the Health Department or charging, invoicing them, then that is not lost revenue that is considered an expense, and therefore is covered under our non-congregate sheltering request. So that was some good news.
Brian, it's also my...
This is Danielle, just to add, sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I was just going to add a caveat to what Brian was saying. It's my understanding that we've been approved for 30 days, and if there is the desire to continue, that we have to submit another request, is that correct?
That is correct. It's only in 30-day increments, and as far as I can tell, they don't want there to be a lapse. So if we hit close to two weeks and we're still wanting to keep this going, we should get everything drafted and ready and in by Day 21, so there's not a lapse, we can just keep it rolling. So yes, they do want regular check-ins on it and regular assessments of need.
Okay.
So this is Danielle. So here in the operations side, we've been having active conversations yesterday afternoon after we, when we received that notification, and this morning, around contracting and how to move that plan forward. So Sarah and I will be setting up meetings with specific community partners to move that forward, hopefully today. We definitely don't want to sit on this and have it not be moved forward as quickly as possible.
Zan?
I have one question when it comes to FEMA grants and aid from both the state and the federal government. My understanding is that things are just really sticky right now, because the order of priority to spend money is just anything that comes through the state first and then federal dollars, but the state has not decided how they're going to allocate, so there's just an incredible amount of uncertainty in terms of what we can count on, and is that still the case?
That is a little bit, so the, like, the CARES Act funding and things like that, that is all up in the air, and some communities have already received some, I don't know to what capacity, and that one is very much in flux and very confusing about what states are allowing to be spent, et cetera. The FEMA-specific ones, like public assistance that we're referring to, have been in place for a while, and none of those procedures have changed, so we're pretty clear there. But all these other to-off spending abilities, I know Public Health got some money from the federal government, and those are a little bit clear, but yeah, there's a lot of questions. Again, this is unprecedented time, we've never seen this before, and everyone seems to be kind of figuring it out as they go along. I hate to say that, but that's a universal opinion across the state and everyone I've talked to.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, what, how long after you submit the application, did we get the FEMA okay?
You know, it was about a week exactly. I think we submitted it last Thursday, I want to say, and we got it back, it was either last Thursday or Friday, and we got this notification yesterday. So it was a pretty quick turnaround time, they said it would take about a week, a week or less, and they were pretty much right on on that timeline. So I think from what it looks like, if we submit it again, I'm assuming it'll be about the same timeline, but she made it sound like it might be quicker.
Sure.
If we already got the approval. It's more of a notification that we're continuing it.
Right. Well, that is good news, that a large agency can, in stressful times, can move that quickly. So anything else for Brian? If not, thank you, and keep up the great work, and we'll talk to you next week. Okay, next up is review of EOC financials, and we have an email from last night with details, and so it looks like George Looney and Don Dale are going to brief us on that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I know it was kind of a bad word to start a financial report with an apology, but I know you've heard from a number of different people, and I'm kind of the next in line. I've been training with Debbie Parsons and Don Dale the last couple weeks to hopefully provide them relief as we move into the future. So I haven't been on this call before, don't know exactly how the presentation is done, so I guess you're going to get my version of it this time, so I hope it's going to provide what you need. So I've worked with your support this week and made a few different, we've made some different changes and additions, and so I'm going to really focus on three of the tabs in the report, the first one being the total cost, and of course, in the upper left-hand corner is where we stand, and this report is as of last Friday, the end of the day. So overall, for all entities, Benton County, City of Corvallis, and others, we're at about $1.2 million that are being attributed to the, to the EOC or to the overall project. Over a million, 300, $1,35,000 of that is payroll or personnel costs, the rest being materials and supplies. So on this page, one of the differences that from last week that you were seeing is that the bottom, there's a section that says county-only pay period, and that's all that you saw last week. This week, there's one that says city-only as well. Last week, we received, or actually, I guess, yeah, it was last week, we received the actual payroll from the City of Corvallis, and so you will see the difference there. Significance are that their pay period is for an entire month, from March 16 through April 15. Our pay period that you're seeing is only for two weeks. We will, we, our pay period, as you probably know, we got paid today, so we will be updating that report today, and when you see it next week, it will have one month for the county, one month for the city as well. So that's why you're seeing a large difference there. The overtime line, very important, because we expect that to be reimbursable expenses. So we're looking right now about 32K. And then at the bottom, you'll see the difference between what we're actually estimating on a daily basis within the EOC versus the true payroll that was done by each entity. The county was fairly close, and you'll notice there were $161,000 off on the city, with the city actual being much higher than what we're estimating. We're kind of making a guess on this, but the, our feeling is that there are two or teams that are being done outside of the EOC that aren't getting reported, or should be being done, I guess would be a better way to say it, that work is getting done within the city and two or teams aren't getting recorded, so that's why we're having that large difference. Debbie has already been in contact with the personnel, or excuse me, the payroll people at the city, and Nancy Brewer is looking at changing their process to one very similar to what the county does to have a better cross-reference on that, to make sure that we're getting all those costs properly recorded on the estimates. So hopefully, it's going to be a month or so, but hopefully the next one will be much closer.
Okay.
So that's kind of the comments on that page. Is there any questions before I move on? The next page I'd like to focus on is the graphs, which is, I believe, the second tab. And starting with the graph up in the upper left-hand corner, you're going to see a very long blue bar for last period for the city, and that is because of the actual payroll being reported. So we made an adjustment, we added that $161,000 in, which pushed the city's costs way up. You'll notice in the prior operational period, the county was very high, and that's when our payroll came in. So that's why you're seeing the difference between those two, it just happens to be when that payroll falls. But the good news is if you took that out, you're starting to see some of these costs starting to reduce, which would make sense, because of the reduction in staff that are in the EOC, we're seeing certainly less people here. I think yesterday there were only 20, where in the past there have been far more than that. So that is really why we see those two large lines. The lower left corner, you see the total cost to date, again, the 1.2 broken out by the entities. So those are graphs that you see in the past. Don gave me the opportunity to add a couple of graphs, so I tried to figure out what might be interesting to see. In the upper right-hand corner, we're projecting what our total costs to date are versus what a projected reimbursement would be. And that projected reimbursement is a best guess at this point. We don't know if that's going to be... We don't know if that's going to be high. I think it's on the high end, but even as, after we prepared this spreadsheet yesterday, there was a change that I'll address in a little bit that could raise that a little bit higher. So it just kind of gives a graphical representation of, of what we're spending and what we might get back. However, we also know that that million dollars of payroll is already in the budget of all outside entities, the city, the county. It does mean that people are doing things differently than maybe what they were budgeted for. But it isn't really truly an additional cost we've incurred. It's just what costs that we've allocated to the pandemic. And then the bottom right-hand graph I had this morning, as I was looking at it to prepare for this, the horrible realization that the legend that I had put onto the graph did not show up. So I'm showing you this wonderful graph of blue and orange and it doesn't say what they are. So I apologize for that, but the blue is personnel, the orange is materials and supplies. So it shows, that's where the 1,35,000 is, is showing that it's personnel, the rest being supplies. So any questions on any of the graphs?
No questions, but those are useful additions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last page that I wanted to address is the very last tab called number graphs. And basically, this is where a lot of that information for the graph comes from. But the section on the right lower part, there's one that starts with total cost and then estimated reimbursement. And that's where we're trying to calculate what that reimbursable is going to be. And so we have things in there that we know, that we, I should never say we know, that we are hoping and expect are going to be reimbursable things, such as overtime and typically materials and supplies. But we do know that there's some things in there that aren't going to be reimbursable, such as the electrical contract didn't fall through with the proper purchasing processes. And so it's going to be excluded. The laptops for the county, or for the city, excuse me, at $100,000 are not going to fall under a reimbursable expense. And the Dr. Thompson is the one that was actually going to get removed because when this was prepared, we didn't think it was going to be reimbursable. Right now, we're, we're in the 50/50 that it might be. So that one's going to get changed. And then we've taken that down to the totals. We've reduced it by the 25% match that FEMA requires to give us that total. Again, it's, it's an estimate. It's a very moving target and it depends a lot on what FEMA does and how things go. But it starts to give us maybe a little bit of a picture of what's going on. The other tabs on the report are pretty much the detail that, that is summarized in these sheets. But if there are any other questions or on any of the tabs or any of these, I would welcome them.
Uh, Zan?
The only other question I have is whether there were any new large expenses that you would want this call to our attention that we hadn't expected.
The only one I would say would be Dr. Thompson, which is on a contract with the health department already. So that's the largest expense. The, other than that, expenses have all been very minimal.
So Zan, this is Don. So I just wanted to pipe in to let you guys know that, so we didn't get this contract together for the homeless.
Don, Don? We're getting, we're getting a lot of feedback from your, your end of things.
It's because me and George are in the same room and he's on the other side. So he just muted, so sorry.
Great.
So I just wanted to bring to the attention that as we move forward with the homeless and the feeding them and doing the hotel motel, that those charges will start to show up. You know, we start doing that the next week. Both me and Danielle kind of talked about the fact of, so the cost that will go with the food and the hygiene kits. We're going to put the contract together where we'll probably do that as a prepaid because Chance does not have the funding to do that ahead of time. And we'll write a contract where that will actually, you know, we'll true it up in the end. And then the hotel motels, as those are being used, we're going to use a voucher system where they will then, that will come back to the EOC where we will actually put that on the P cards. And so, you know, that's almost 100K in total for that. So over the next 30 days, you'll see that will be kind of a large expenditure that will be hitting our sheet. So I guess that would be the one expenditure that I would like you guys to know that will be coming forward.
Thank you.
I would add, one other expense that I think also is coming is that we did complete a contract this week with a printing company. And I believe that there's a door flyer that's being produced by the PIO group that's going to go out. And I've heard in the range of maybe 18K is what that's going to, going to cost. And that's something that we should be seeing probably within the next couple of weeks. So just as a heads up that that's coming.
Thank you. On the tracking of expenses and FEMA reimbursement at this point, I, I think the best we can do is, just like in Brian's report of getting pre-approval when appropriate and hoping for the best. I think of the PPP program that $250 billion or whatever the number was, went away very quickly. And I can, I can see all over the country, people tracking expenses that they think or hope are reimbursable. And like a lot of this, that's to be determined at some future date. But it goes back to doing a good job of the record-keeping and then, then we have a chance of getting some reimbursement at some time in the future. So I appreciate that, those ongoing efforts on the record-keeping and tracking. And, and George, you sound like an old pro. This, this was.
Thank you.
If this was your first time, the only comment I'd have is this is our normal schedule that the financials for the previous full Monday through Friday come, come out on Wednesday. And then we get updated at our 10 o'clock Thursday meeting. So we're, I think we're getting, getting used to that pattern. And then lay on top of that, the different payroll periods for the city and the county and getting that smoothed out a little bit so that we have, have a better picture of our expenses. Joe?
George, a question for you. You mentioned an upcoming expense of $18,000 for some printing. Can you tell me if that went through the proper, proper approval process? That does exceed the thresholds that the EOC directors have? So can you explain to me what process was gone through to receive that, that approval?
Yes. It definitely went through the proper process. We received three quotes from different, different entities. Those were all evaluated actually by multiple people. And the lowest-cost provider was selected and the contract was initiated with them, with the proper FEMA language and all of that in there.
What I'm looking for is how did the EOC directors handle that process? Because that expense does exceed the thresholds identified in the contracts that the city and county have, or I should say the MOU. So Brian, if you're still on the line, maybe you could address this?
Actually, if I could, this is Don. If I can pipe in, I can give you an answer for that. So, so the printing contract, when we had the conversations with the PIO on that, it came up that there would be multiple, probably printing. And so we decided to do a contract for that, knowing that there will be several projects on that. So what we've completed is the contract. So the next piece that the finance will do is once the PIO puts that project together and submits it to the printing company, they will then give us an estimate or quote. And so we've kind of been told that that first project could be close to 18K. So at that point, once they get an estimate or a quote, finance will then do that PO project that I've talked about, form in the past. We will run that by the sheriff and undersheriff and then they will sign off on that. So any future printing, we have the contract, but then there's the separate piece, which is the spending authority, which I think is what you're talking about, Joe. And so then we will run that process through. So as those come through, we'll let the sheriff and undersheriff do it and then they will notify you at that point that that expenditure has come through. And then you guys will see that on the spreadsheet.
Great, Don, thanks. That's exactly what I was looking for. I want to make sure the process that we outlined is being followed and it sounds like it is. So thank you.
It is, and I've instructed George of that. So as he fills in and gives me a break for the next couple of weeks, he is aware of that process. And just to let you know, I also, even though I won't be in the EOC, I still will be a part of all of the procurement and contracts and, and still overseeing that from the sheriff's office, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is Lilia. Don, thanks so much for providing that overview. And all that I would add, commissioners, is that the contracting process that Don and George described with regards to the three quotes, it just turned out to be a lot more difficult than anticipated. This was a tactic that we had originally proposed several weeks ago. And so we've revised this particular tactic in terms of the direct mail piece. So when the original request went through the EOC director request process that you described, Joe, it was not at that $18,000 level. It was in between 3,000 and 10,000. Given what Don described, for us to be as efficient and strategic as possible when going through the contracting process, that's why it's now at this larger amount.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Just a comment, I'm really glad you're, you're on board, George, and being part of the rotation at EOC. I think it's important on a lot of positions that we have, have a team so that no one person is getting run into the ground because they're the only ones that, that know that particular function. So welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, the Ignite Wellness Program Virtual Care Package. Jesus and Tracy?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Hey, I was going to get access to the co-presenter piece so I could share some screens. Is that available now?
Maybe. Lilia's working on it.
Actually, Erica, do you see Jesus in the meeting lineup?
I did not, I'm sorry. Teresa, are you still there?
Hold on, it looks like I can do it.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Jesus, you're now the presenter. You could probably share your screen.
Okay, can you guys see that okay?
We sure can.
Yep.
Great, great. So yeah, I'd like to quickly introduce you guys. We're looking at presenting a virtual care package to our staff, which really comes through our pipeline with Navigate, who is our, who are a provider for our wellness portal. So they have created this virtual care package that we plan on sharing with staff that really just reintroduces them to the power of A, which is what our Ignite portal is based on. The idea of the A, our social, balance, purpose, mindfulness, financial, community, physical and nutrition. So clearly, at times, we focus on the physical pieces, getting people active and moving. And our portal does a great job of introducing people to other areas of wellness, not physical pieces. And that's really what we're focused on as we move forward with COVID is how do we address some of those needs that people may come to, to want to experience and learn more about. So this care package, I'll give you a quick example of what one of the modules looks like. And I'll bring that screen over now. So they designed it as COVID was taking off and, and, you know, moving people to remote contact. But a big part of this is just, again, they designed modules for each one of these sections. And I wanted to show you what they sent to us. You can see here all the different modules, all the different descriptions of them. And, and then I will open up one of them, which I have for you guys. And this is the community one. And a big part of the reason I like this a lot is because each one of the modules has a video that people can watch, the quick video. But it also introduces people to apps. These are not apps that are solely a part of the Ignite portal. So if people click on these things, they'll be introduced to apps in the Google platform or the Apple platform that will introduce them to other ways of, again, staying connected with those, with those specific topics. As if they want to participate in our challenges, they would click on this button here and that takes them back to our portal where they can get reintroduced to some other challenges available through our portal. And then there is also podcasts along the way that each one of these modules has. I will now play a quick video, hopefully this works out good on your end and see how that plays out. But this is again, the community one. So here goes.
How connected do you feel to your community right now? The community pillar of wellbeing addresses how you interact with those who share similar interests and goals. And the quality of those relationships and how it impacts your impact on your wellbeing. Communities are a broad network of relationships within your neighborhood, city and beyond. Several communities are associated with lower stress, better health and even longer life expectancy. Fortunately, the web has made it possible to interact with our communities when in-person gatherings aren't possible. Virtual connections can be made through video, photos, calls and other forms of messaging. To build a stronger sense of community, be sure to offer support in a way that aligns with your strengths. Ask questions to better understand the needs of the group and express kindness and gratitude regularly. To continue your journey with a stronger community, check out the additional resources and activity choices.
So again, that's just an example for the community-based one, which encourages people, again, to actively get involved clearly on the community side. But again, I mean, there's, there's some really awesome stuff throughout all the modules. And what we want to do is kind of incentivize staff to participate in these modules by having them sign up for basically a raffle, meaning that they've gone through all the modules, they've acknowledged all the videos and basically just self-report that they've participated in these modules and looking at all of them. Once they do that, we plan on just throwing some swag at people, which is what we could use right now as far as an energy standpoint. People always like surprises and we have plenty, plenty of them to offer because due to COVID, we have kind of postponed or canceled some of our activities into the spring. And so we have a little bit of that available for staff. So that's just a quick, a quick view of what this virtual care package looks like. And again, ultimately connecting people back to our portal, which is really important because that is where the rest of the information lands for the purposes of challenges and what's happening with our wellness stuff. So this is in front of you now, our wellness portal. People will be, can be, can. People will be, can participate in all the different kinds of challenges outside of even the ones that are presented for the module. Any questions that I can answer?
I guess I have an easy one. Is this up and running at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. Our portal's been ongoing for quite some time now. This is just, in addition to that, the modules are new, based on what's happening with COVID. And so we would actually introduce all the, we will introduce all the PDFs to staff, and they can self-view the PDFs on their own and click on the videos on their own. They won't need to go to any other website for that. If during the review of the modules, they want to learn more about our portals, they will then go to this portal, which is what's in front of you today. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Zan?
Jesus? How much uptake has there been on our challenges since we've switched to this platform with Navigate Wellbeing Solutions? Has it been pretty good?
I would say so. I think the availability of all the challenges, because again, they focus outside of just the physical pieces, it's been really neat to see what people select. These challenges are constantly updated by our provider as they are able to see which challenges are activated by staff, which ones have traffic. So in February, they launched an additional 12, I believe, this year that people have access to. And I just really like the variety that they offer here. But as an admin, we can actually, I can actually show you real quick what's been going on with the participation. So a big part of it is also the wellness survey, which has helped us trigger some data on there as well. So let me get you that information right now. So we have 242 registered users. And then as far as, you can see here, this number, it kind of, it might be a little small on your screen. Let's see if I can increase it. There we go. So you can see here all the little numbers as far as participation. We've had 195 people do their survey, 176 do their tobacco affidavit, and then the rest, you'll see participation in all the different challenges. So 25 for Eat Well, Be Well, 19 for Goodby Stress, 39 other people have done their personal challenges, 1, 2, and 3. And then we've had 72 people sign up for A Page to Move. So to answer your question, I think the data, now that we're actually capturing electronically, is still up for review. I would say that more people are engaged in the wellness portal than we previously did manually. Manually, we used to only attract physical pieces, physical challenges. Where here, we're actually attracting all kinds of different activities, which also includes financial pieces and whatnot. So the volunteerism one is pretty neat. We've had 38 people report volunteer efforts from their community, which is really, really neat. So you can see other ones here. This is 1,000 push-ups in 30 days, 24 people have signed up for that, reading and whatnot. Those are all part of that. You can see our active minutes that have been reported through the different devices that are connected. And then you can see steps. And then you can, then you can see the survey lists that are down here.
Thank you. You've given lots of information.
Yeah, yeah, there is quite a bit. And part of getting people attracted to these modules is to get them back also connected to our portal. That's a big part of that as well. So it's so easy not to focus on that during these times. There's so much going on, so many different things taking people's attention and time, and we get it. And so anything that we can do to redirect them, if possible, to this kind of world, we want to do that, so.
Well, that's great, Jesus. And I would echo your point about, I think of the exercise and being physical, I think that's probably more important now than ever. And it's great to have charts and graphs and how many people are participating and be able to show that to maybe folks that haven't signed up yet and give them a little encouragement to use some of these programs.
Jesus, Joe Kirby, I just really like to recognize you and your colleagues in HR. This really is a state-of-the-art platform that we're using, and I am impressed by some of the numbers that I see. So thank you for all the work that you're doing behind the scenes to ensure that we have the opportunity to stay as healthy as possible. Great job.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the support from our leadership and our board. I know that part of our budget as far as approvals and whatnot are blessed through you guys, so we appreciate the support for the wellness programming. In addition to the Navigate modules that we'll present, we will be offering staff links to, we've been working with Orange Theory behind the scenes. They have some pre-virtual workouts that they're going to be linking us to, that everyone can participate on from home. So they've adapted their workouts for that. And so I look forward to also introducing that, in addition to that as well, to the modules.
Okay. Any other questions for Jesus or Tracy? All right. Well, careful planning. Kate Portia said she would be able to join us at 11.
She's on the line.
Yep. And I see that you're here, Kate, so if you're...
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesus. And there she is. Morning, Kate.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. It's so nice to see all you guys.
First up is the Business Loan Program.
Yes, indeed, indeed. And I wondered if, before we pop into the Business Loan Program, if I could just give a quick update from, with the new structure here at the EOC, or perhaps Brian has reviewed that with you guys already?
I don't think so, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. And I'll be very brief on that. I just wanted to keep you guys up to date with how things are working out there. So I think, as you know, they appointed me, I'm not sure if it was a promotion or a demotion, no, just kidding, to be the operations section chief out here at the EOC. And I'm just honored to do that service for you guys. Great team of people, which I know you guys already know are working out here. In thinking through the operations section, you may have heard, we reorganized slightly. So now under operations will be the public health component, the liaison branch, economic recovery. And we've made just one slight change. Originally, Paul Belada and I were going to be shifting off, taking a week on, and then he would take a week. And I think what I quickly realized here is that some continuity of leadership would be really helpful. And so we've restructured slightly to where I'll actually be here nine days on, and I'm going to take every other Friday off so that I don't totally crash and burn. So Paul will be here every other Friday, but then Paul is going to be sort of the deputy chief, and he's going to take on the housing and homelessness component. And we thought that was a really good fit and great way to take advantage of his skillset and get him plugged in to really be working on the full spectrum of housing, from those who are without houses all the way up to those who may be in jeopardy of losing their houses because of the crisis, right? So we're pretty excited about this structure. Everybody's on board with it, and things are really beginning to sync up and work really well, at least for me. I know things have already been going well here. We are working on, we have put together a recovery plan team, or reopening plan, excuse me, a reopening plan team. That group met, and they are, as you guys know, working on the beginnings of what that draft plan will look like while coordinating that work with the state, and of course, waiting to hear what they're going to have to say on that. So I kind of wanted to let you know, I'm really excited, especially being in the ops position, because what I think we all know is going to be so important is this cross collaboration when we talk about reopening, we talk about economic recovery, we talk about housing, all of those are intertwined. And I think now, being here, we're really going to be able to integrate those horizontally. So that was just a quick update that I was hoping to give.
Zan?
I have a quick question. We've all heard from our friends, neighbors, employees, that childcare is going to be a major issue when we reopen. Is there a team or a group that's focused on that issue in particular?
Funny, you know, I don't know that we have a team here at our EOC. I will say, I just got off the phone call with our partner, the regional solutions team through the governor's office, and state does have a team working on that very question because they recognize that it is going to be a critical component in getting people back to work, is having care for their children. So we're certainly keeping in touch up through the state level, and I think there will be an opportunity for us to consider that as well in our Benton County plan. I do feel like, though, Zan, that that will be one primarily that we will get direction and there will be guidance and rulemaking coming down from the state on that one. Yeah. I will tell you guys, this week, in fact, this week, gosh, it was a day ago, we did get some draft reopening policies for business sectors. So they had done one like for restaurants and manufacturing, and they're very draft that we were asked to vet those with a handful of businesses and get back with the state very quickly to kind of let them know, could businesses reopen and be profitable under the guidelines that they drafted up? And so I know the state, I love, I'm just, I'm very heartened by the fact that they're not, they're not doing this rulemaking in a closed box. They're doing outreach, they're listening to the practitioners, and then we're able to hear from the actual businesses and get that information out of the country.
Excellent. That sounds a lot better than some states.
Indeed, indeed. Yeah, so that's all I had on those. So I appreciate the opportunity to just maybe review that, just to let you guys know the new fund that we're having out here at the EOC, which is a great place to be. And with that, then, Commissioner Malone, I'd be happy to go through and talk about the loan program, if this is a good time for you.
That would be great, and I appreciate the update on your role at the EOC, and that really is encouraging that you're plugged into that and integral part of the local recovery effort.
Thank you. You bet, you bet. Okay, so on the loan program, I sent out, and then I think either Teresa or Nick had forwarded to you guys in that packet of information that you received. I know the EOC cost spreadsheet was in that same email, but I've got a memo. I'm going to just go through this real quickly. But I've got some exciting news on a couple of fronts to share. So here's the good news. I think we are pretty much ready to roll with the loan program. And I'm hoping that I can talk to you about the loan program, and then I've got another item after we talk about this related to the CBDG funding for small businesses that I was hoping you could talk about. So on the loan program, the document that I sent out goes over and just refines a couple of those items that we had talked about at the last meeting. So what's being proposed is a $100,000 contribution from the county's de-federalized CBDG fund to basically set up this emergency loan fund for our Benton County businesses. Community lending work, but more specifically, Depp Northwest in our area, will match those funds with $50,000. So we would have total capitalization of $150,000 for this fund. The proposal is that the loans would be $5,000 to $10,000, meaning that we're going to be able to assist 15 to 30 businesses through this process. And I think as we talked about, no payments for the first six months, interest only for the next six months, and then the actual amortization of loans for the remaining 48 months, which is a really good structure. We've been hearing from businesses just to give them that grace for the first six months where they're not having to worry about anything, and then the next six months where the interest only is very good. It's a modest interest rate of 2%. Any, we talked about that, repaying principal gets paid back then at that remaining four years. We are really cognizant of making this easy and encouraging our minority-owned businesses to apply. So we would be doing an application and promotion and marketing materials in both English and Spanish. And 30, we would do the 30% set-aside that I think we all talked about, and that 30% of funds would be a set-aside pot for either rural or minority-owned businesses in Benton County. And again, we call that a soft set-aside because we would do that set-aside, that $45,000 for the minority or rural-owned businesses. They then would have a lottery, and again, all of these will be on a lottery system rather than a first-come, first-served. The folks that are minority or rural would then have access to the lottery just for that pot of funds to increase their chances. If for some reason we don't utilize all those funds, I actually think we will, but if we don't, and there's some left over, then we would roll those funds back into the general fund and be able to hit a couple more folks who would apply. Oh, sorry. I see Zan has a question.
Zan?
Yes, a quick question. The way you explained it, I'm not quite certain about the pools. And for instance, if there was a request for more than 30% of the funds from rural and minority-owned businesses, would they have access to the rest of the funds? The way you described it, it made it sound like there were two pools, and they would be limited to that, and so...
No, in fact, so it's meant, yeah, I appreciate that, and I see where I could have found it that way. They have access to both pools. I guess, you know, it's not that they can double dip, but really, the notion is that minority and rural businesses will have a pool of funds available to them. If we have more minority and rural applications than we have funding, I believe the way it works for Depp Northwest is they then put those applications into the general pool and then do a lottery system out of that entire general pool, is how that would work. Does that help explain?
Yes.
In terms of timing, we really talked about this. Other communities have left it out for a short, opened for a shorter amount of time. Our team is recommending a seven calendar day opening. Again, we feel that while it's going to delay it just a little bit by a couple of days for some businesses, it will give some other businesses, either who aren't as connected or if perhaps English isn't their first language, the opportunity to get applications in and be part of that lottery process. So that's what we're proposing. We are, we're going to wait, we're waiting a little bit to hear from our partners, but we are proposing that we would begin promoting this on Monday, open it up on Wednesday, May 6, and then the applications would be closing Tuesday, May 12 at midnight. And Depp Northwest, these guys are like miracle workers. They, I believe in Albany, once it closed, they were able to do the, kind of the review, the lottery, and getting the funds out the door in a very short order, like 72 hours, really, really quick. So this will be money on the ground, getting out the door quite quickly, which I think is what our businesses need. In terms of eligibility, again, we've talked about this, they would have their headquarters in Benton County. Behind the scenes, we would do a carve-out, as we discussed at the last meeting, where city of Albany residents or businesses within Benton County would not be eligible because they already had access to funds through the city of Albany. And again, there's not that many businesses up there. One recommendation that we at least have settled on, and for you guys, we talked about this a little bit, we would like to recommend that they have 40 or fewer employees. I do want to talk a little bit more about this below. And of course, they had to have been in good financial standing before the disaster. The, again, we run this through, but just to remind you, because I know you guys have lots on your mind, is the, basically, community lending work has agreed that they will pass through any principal repayments that they receive. Those funds would come back to Benton County so we could, you know, renew your funding pot. But in trade for that, they're charging a 4% upfront administration fee, basically for the work that they'll be doing, which is not insignificant to administer these loans. these loans. So the one...
Mary, I have a question about. Do they, is that coming out of the pot of money or is that additional money that we will need to pay them? 4% on top of the $100,000?
That is a choice, that's a choice for you guys. I, I assumed, I assumed that it would come out of the 150, which would then, or excuse me, out of the $100,000. So really then, you'd be, really you'd be giving, what, 96,000? It might be a little bit less. I'm not clear, I need to check with them. I'm not clear if we are paying 4% administration fee on their 50,000. I would think not. I think it would just be on yours. So, but it is a question. If you guys have the extra, if you want to truly make the loan funding pot $100,000, then you would need to fund that 4% fee from another source.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, so just a couple of questions that I wanted to share with you that, that sort of gets into the, we've talked about the underwriting. I don't think I want to spend too much time on the underwriting unless you guys have questions on how they would do that. I'm very comfortable with the process that Dev Northwest has set up, which basically is to vet these companies and really primarily to make sure they were in good financial standing going into the crisis. Again, because the notion here is to save companies that were strong before, not companies that were struggling before. There is an interesting tidbit though, that I wanted to share, that I'm pretty excited about. So one of the things, you know, I have told Joe that I've left no rock unturned, unturned, trying to find more funds for you guys to capitalize this. I did have one meeting with a local credit union who at this point in time is not able to participate in this round, but they may be able to in the future. So that was exciting. And then we did just hear word back from the state of Oregon that they do have a fair amount of funds. This is through the, their emergency executive board that are going to be coming down the pike, some through Business Oregon, some through our local CDFIs. What we have heard, and I actually saw an email from Business Oregon, is, because the thing I was worried about, I was worried that Benton County was going to set up this loan program, and then two weeks later, the state of Oregon was going to say, great, we have all these matching funds. So communities, come bring your matching funds and we'll do it, and that we would have missed the opportunity by being too early. But I now have an email in my box that confirms that Business Oregon will consider any matching funds that communities have put up going back to the declaration of the emergency. So I'm super excited to report that your, our funds that you're putting in now for this program will be able to leverage the state dollars that should be coming out, we don't know, in the next week or two. So we can get this going now, help our businesses, and then like leverage those funds. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. I do want to share though, and be transparent, the funds that are coming down the pike from the state of Oregon are a little more restrictive than the program that we have proposed here. And I, that does not present a problem in terms of the match. It's just that ours would be a little broader. There's just going to be a little more stringent. So the Business Oregon fund, again, the rulemaking isn't finished, but what we're hearing is that it will be for businesses with 25 or fewer employees. And if, if you're following along, I'm at the bottom of that second page of this memo. And it would only be for businesses who have not received federal funding. So if businesses have received the payroll protection or the SBA loans, idle loans, they would not be eligible for that next round of state funding. So I wanted to check in with you all. My thought on, on this initial program with your funds is that you leave it broader, leave it more general, is that it could be businesses who have received those funds, leave it at the 40 employee or fewer mark. It's going to cast a big net, and again, we're going to have more applicants than we will fund. But that's the direction I would go. But if you have an interest, you certainly can paper it down so it exactly matches the recommendations coming from the governor's office. And so with that, I'd like to pause, because those, those are really just the two, the two pieces we have left. We have a draft contract. Jerry has worked up edits to that, so we've got that ready to pass over back to, to Vance and Joe and Mary for your guys' review. But let me stop there and for some discussion.
Kate, on the number of employees, if, if we go at 40 and the state is 25, would you anticipate that causing a problem with getting matching funds?
I do not. I do not. As I understand it, they, the Business Oregon email that I was privy to was that they would consider loan funds that communities propped up to be applicable for the match. And, and remember too, Lane County, you know, for example, the city of Albany, they did a program up to 40. There's other communities. They, they want to be, I think they want to leverage as much as they can. So no, I do not anticipate that being a problem.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Kate? Zan?
I would say that I, at this point, would prefer it to be broader, as, as the 40 employee threshold seems fine. And if they've received idle or PPP, I wouldn't discount them from receiving funds from us. But I, I, but that's something that I, I just don't know enough about, because I don't know how many people in the community have received those funds. I know some places in Oregon, no one has. So what's your sense?
My sense is that we have many people who have applied or tried to apply, but we don't have many people that have actually had the funds come through. And sadly, on the payroll protection, we know of many examples of people who either did not have a banking relationship with an SBA approved lender, or had a banking relationship, but quite frankly, it wasn't robust enough, right? A lot of banks are requiring that you have your checking account through them and that you have a credit line or a credit card with, you know, a $20,000 or higher credit limit, which is excluding lots of folks. It's really frustrating. And in fact, at this point in time, the PPP right now isn't actually yet, oh, they've, they've added more money to it, as I'm sure you guys all know, as of Monday, which is great. But right now, they haven't opened it for new applications. They're still just processing through the backlog of applications. So what sort of felt like, oh, there's going to be all this other money and people who hadn't received it, that may still be the case. I'm hopeful. But right now, they're just still chugging through the, the applications that were already in the pipeline, if that makes sense. So to your point, Zan, I think that's why at least from our, from our purview, we landed on that, testing that broader net. And again, remember, it's through their application, the onus is going to be upon the applicant to demonstrate the need. And so if they have received the PPP or SBA, they're going to need to buy, they still would need your precious funds, if that makes sense.
I, I think that the way you're presenting it makes it much cleaner, partly because at this point, it would be hard for a business to know whether they have received idle or PPP.
Okay. Well, I, I'm really happy with the 72-hour turnaround. I, I think it's reasonable to have, have it open for a week, and then I, I think that, that shows the importance of having a good partner that does this on a regular basis and can be, be efficient, have an efficient process. So that, that is good news.
Indeed. And I will say, I mean, again, we've had so many great, amazing partners through this whole process, SBDC, others, but Dev Northwest, it's, it's pretty amazing what they're able to do. So we're grateful for them. I was going to say too, I don't know how, how it works in, in your county world, because I'm still learning about that. Typically in the city, I think what we would be looking for at this point would be a, a motion authorizing the, the county administrator to enter into a contract. But I don't know, you know, I leave that, Joe, to you and Vance, in terms of how that's to move this forward. If we did go that route, I was hoping, because then we, on staff, Joe, Vance, and, and Mary could, could look at the contract, make sure it aligns with everything we said, but then we would not need to bring that back to you guys.
Kate, that, Kate, that would be our, Kate, that would be my preference, is that the board does take action today so that we can get this program up and running as quickly as possible. And I do think that a contract or MOU of some sort is necessary and valuable.
Well, I would be happy to make a motion to provide Joe and Mary with the authority to negotiate a contract to set up this Benton County COVID-19 loan. I would second that motion.
All right. Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess, is that an administrative item, the 4%, whether it comes out of the $100,000 or...
If the board would like to speak to that, you can. Otherwise, my intent was to work with Mary and, and have that not taken out of the $100,000. That was my direction I was going to head. But if the board disagrees with that, certainly now is the time to share that.
Are, are we okay with our, the county's contribution being $104,000, and so that we have a, a full $100,000 for loans? Zan, Annabelle?
Works for me.
Okay. So $104,000. Okay? Any other, any other questions on the loan program? Next item, CDBG grant.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate you letting, letting me kind of slide within. It's in a similar vein though, so we're, we're kind of, we have some continuity there. Had the opportunity to have a very, very helpful conversation with Melissa Murphy, who is our Business Oregon partner for this area, as well as a couple of the CDBG gurus from the state of Oregon. And if you would like to follow along, this was the PTF that was sent along labeled CDBG Emergency Assistance Table 3. And pretty interested in this. And what I was hoping is that I could preview this with you guys, and perhaps if it's something that is, sounds exciting or of interest to you, get a, a pre-authorization, perhaps apply when the funds open. So if you look at the grid, really, we're looking at page one of this document primarily, but the folks up at Business Oregon have set up the, basically, two, two main pots of grant funding through CDBG. One, the one on the first page is really the one we're looking at, is only eligible for non-entitlement county. So the interesting thing about this, this would be completely separate from the city of Corvallis and would only be focused on folks outside of the city limits, right? So we're talking about our, our rural businesses, which I think is very exciting. Basically, the purpose of these funds is to enable either the retention or creation of jobs held by low and moderate income persons, and to, to basically help the businesses stay strong and fill financial gaps that they may have. There is the potential for Benton County to apply for up to $150,000 for these funds, which would be allocated to lower moderate income businesses or, or businesses who have low moderate income workers, again, in the rural parts of the county. And then this would be another one where we would work with our partners, either at Dev Northwest or Community Lending Works. I need to check on which technical entity would be helping with us, but they would handle the, the administration of these for us. Interesting. These are not actually open yet, but we know they are forthcoming. And we've been told, again, I know we're hearing a lot from the state, it's coming, and, and this one is coming, we just don't know when exactly. These will be on a first come, first served basis. And so I think you guys are, are getting to know me well enough that if there's funding, like, I want to be first in line for you guys. And so I wanted to bring it up today to see if you would have an interest in applying. As I understand, the first step in the application process will be a, I'm looking for my notes. I apologize, panel, a second. It will be a, a pre-application form. That would be, when they open it up, we just fill out a pre-application form to basically express our interest in applying. Interestingly, I don't know what the right number is. I don't know that Benton County would need $150,000, perhaps 75 or 80 is what my gut says. But I would encourage you guys to consider this, and I think it could be beneficial for our LMI employees and businesses throughout, throughout the county.
Kate, Joe Kirby, question for you as it relates to the city of Corvallis being an entitlement city, quote unquote, as it relates to CDBG. What type of funds will the city of Corvallis be receiving directly as a result of this program?
And I don't know the answer to that yet. There's been quite a few emails flying back and forth. I'm, it's possible that we know the answer, and I'm just not up to speed, but I'm not sure we know the number just yet. I think, I, the last I heard, Joe, was that, it's similar, it's forthcoming, but I don't know that we know what that number is.
It's been a very, very confusing process, I would have to say. It's been trying to track this down also. And there are actually a total of four different pots of CDBG money that are coming through that are CARES Act related, and these are just the first two. So, and then there's the regular CDBG competition that Corvallis has access to as an entitled city, and that's already planned out. And so it's, it's a, it's a real tangle.
It is, it is. And I will say this also, I, funny, right after you guys, I'm back to back, I'm, I'm with our city councilors next, who I, I see there's at least one on the call right, on this call right now. But one of the points that I'm going to make with the city council, and that I think I would share with you guys too, is this notion, and we're really thinking about this here at the EOC, is that we consider, we consider this, you know, challenging time holistically. I think all of us understandably have been in just a reactionary phase until now, and we really are beginning to pivot into this phase of recovery. And as we look to recovery, I think we need to consider the holistic issues that face us. And rather than just reacting to, here's this bucket of money and, oh, let's apply for that, but to, to think about things holistically, understand the needs, and then look to our funding sources and understand where we can plug those funds in, in the right way. And I think Corvallis is, you know, is going to need to be looking at this too. In the past, and of course, Corvallis has such a great housing need. In the past though, Corvallis has only used their CDBG funds for housing. And of course, you're talking to an economic development girl, right? So, so I, you know, I want to make sure too, though, that in front of the city council is a conversation, and at least they understand that one of the potentials for the special CDBG funds that they'll be getting, Joe, is that part of that conversation be like, hey, there's an opportunity to also help businesses, and might that be one of the priorities that you would consider as well? It's a tough one though, you know, and I know you guys are nodding, but it's like, you know, it'll be me and 20 other people with needs just as important lined up. So, but I guess I, what I want to share with you is that we, at least from my perspective, I'm really trying to push on this, let's look at things holistically and understand the different needs from the different areas so that you all, or state councilors, policymakers can understand the breadth of needs.
Zan?
I just want to say that I would be supportive of going for, you know, somewhere in that vicinity of 75, 80, 90, $10,000 for Benton County, low and moderate income owned businesses in order to make these grants. I think that it really would be a wonderful thing to be able to do for our businesses outside of Corvallis. And then I also want to say that I'm very much looking forward to one of the next buckets of CDBG money that is designated hopefully for rental assistance, because I think that's going to be hopefully, for rental assistance, because I think that's going to become a humongous need, and want to be able to make sure that we have those funds for the remainder of the county.
Completely agree.
Nick, did you have a question?
I did. Wondered, have you shared the, I think it's called Department Advisory Committee with the commissioners, and will that be helping inform kind of that holistic planning the EOC is giving?
You know, funny, I haven't. I appreciate you bringing that up, Nick, thank you. We, one of the things that we've talked about, this is in the economic recovery branch, if you will, I'm learning the terminology here. One of the things that we've talked about was the creation of a, a sort of non-official advisory body. At the city, we would call this a departmental advisory committee, but basically comprised of business leaders throughout Corvallis, a still somewhat small and nimble group. We drafted up a list of folks that we think could be helpful. I think it's maybe nine people, Nick, I can't recall. But basically, a small group that we could interact with more frequently, and ask them, run some of these ideas up the blindfold with them, and check in and see how this is landing, have, you know, this sort of, again, unofficial group that's helping, helping us to understand how these ideas are fitting in, how they would be affected. So yeah, that's on our work list. We drafted a list, and we are pretty excited to get that group going.
Okay. Kate, is there any reason that we, are there any negative or any reasons why we should not apply for the grant?
Not to my knowledge. I think I would say, these will be pretty, you know, you talk about the constraints on these different loan programs. This one's going to be pretty constrained, as we all know, CDBG dollars can be. So, no, I don't think, I don't think there's any reason not to apply for these, or to be poised for the ask. Yeah. And in fact, they, in talking with the CDBG folks, they indicated that we should talk about the loan funds that you're standing up. We don't want to make our, your loan funds a match for this, because then these become CDBG dollars also, but that they, I think we can illustrate, hey, we're serving this type of businesses with your loan funds, but we still have this need over here in terms of CDBG funds to come out.
Okay. And the dollar amount, I would be inclined to leave that up to you, and maybe it's a strategic number, or a thoughtful number that you think that we can make good use of. So, Zan?
I have a question that is a follow-up on that, and that is, I, what is the time window for making these grants? Is it going to be, I hope, long of a sudden to be available if we, what's the term of the grant? I'm not asking this very well. But I think that would also determine how much we would apply for, because I can easily see that the need would change over time. But I also know that there's going to be enough demand at the state level that we need to make sure that we are not over-asking, or the opponent would not be competitive. So I didn't see anything in any of the guidance about the duration of the grants to us would be, and how quickly we would have to get things out for.
Yes, I didn't either. I will certainly inquire with the, with the CDBG gurus and ask them about that. And I'm with you, because if it is, if it's something that could roll on for a couple of years, if we had that to get out the door, then you're right, we could go with that higher amount. The other folks I'd like to confer with on this are our partners at Dev Northwest slash Community Lending Works, because they may have some really good thoughts about how, you know, about rolling this out, the businesses in Benton County that could use this. So I'd be happy to consult with them on that.
And also the folks over at the Council of Governments might have some information on that grant as well, since they also make this kind of loan.
Yes, thank you. That's a great suggestion.
Okay. Is that enough guidance for you to proceed, Kate?
I think so. And what is, again, as I understand the process, the first step is really just going to be this, this quick application form, this letter of intent, almost, like, hey, we are interested. So I believe there will be a go-no-go point before, you know, anything official occurs, where we can circle back to you all, ensure that everyone is comfortable, that we're all clear on what the guidelines will be. So that is my understanding, that I would bring it back. But I appreciate, I appreciate the authorization to move forward and at least be first in line with the ask when it comes up. I will say, there is another one on that that I'm still exploring. It's not ready for me to really talk about today. But it's interesting, if you guys have time later, on the second page of that document I sent you, is sort of this second pot of funding. And this was more for, you know, counties to build facilities, public services. I didn't think you guys were so much in that space. But the first one, they do have a pot of funds for businesses who can manufacture, basically PPE, right? And one of the things I will tell you that is already a hot topic, is we're looking at the reopening plan. It is abundantly clear that there are two just glaring needs. One is testing, well, three maybe, contact tracing is the other that we're trying to figure out. But the third one is going to be PPE for our businesses. At this point in time, the state has authorized us as an EOC to put PPE out to medical facilities only. We are not authorized to give PPE to businesses, nor do this point, do we really even have enough to just get out to businesses. But it tells me that when we get to this first phase of reopening, businesses may want to reopen, but if they don't have the PPE that they need, how are they going to do that? Or how are they going to protect their employees or customers? So one of the things that I'm really keen on figuring out, we've already been working towards this, is are there Benton County manufacturers who can help with this process, and can we give them some either state or federal money to have them be the suppliers for our very own Benton County businesses that want to reopen? It may not be possible in all cases, because we don't have, we don't have hardly anybody making N95 masks, but businesses don't need N95 masks, right? They need cloth masks, they need sanitizers, cleaning stuff. So I wanted to share that with you, because I think there is, I want to, I want to explore that a little more with the CDBG funds, because there may be some potential to get some funds out to our manufacturers, who we have been in close contact with, to get them a little bit of funding, so they could maybe ramp up and do even more to produce for our own businesses to reopen. So that's maybe just a preview of a future conversation. How about that?
Okay. I think that's a great idea. As our supply chains have gotten longer and longer, it shows our vulnerabilities, because it takes, even if the Chinese were cranking them out, it takes a long time to get, get things across a large ocean. And just like we've gone to more local food sources, so we have a better idea of the quality and supporting local people, local businesses, I think this might fit right in. So I would look forward to more information on that, and I appreciate you getting that on, on your radar, so it can be on ours. But, and again, it's not just applying for the money, it's having some idea what, what good we could do with it. But, so keep us posted.
Yes.
Annabelle, did you have any questions on, on what we're talking about here? You're muted. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I think we should, we should.
Any other questions or comments for Kate? Well, I'm sure we will be talking to you soon, so keep us posted. And I'll say again, I appreciate the getting out of the reactionary mode of, oh, there's money over there, let's apply for it, versus, well, who needs this, and how many of our businesses would this apply to, and being more thoughtful about the process, instead of treating this like some Easter egg hunt, where you run around and collect as much as you can before the other kids get it. But, so.
Thank you, Kate. You bet. You bet.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
We are now down to other. Is there any other other? Aleah?
Yes, sir.
Did you have some? Oh, you were raising your hand. You raised your hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize my computer was on.
I was looking at you.
Oh, you just were looking at her eyes.
With my eyes.
How old is passion?
On that.
I wouldn't take that from her.
Zan?
I had asked a couple of questions of Tracy as a result of the presentation yesterday, and I was wondering whether or not your answers to those, and I apologize if you already sent them to me by email, but I have not seen them.
Tracy is still here, so.
Hi, yes, I am. And I did send those back to you by email, and then just a few minutes ago, so I just got it in.
Okay. What I had asked, Commissioners, is just about, a little bit of interpretation about the HR dashboard that is being used by county leadership to look at leave over time, and whether there was a pattern of people using the FMLA leave, or just the COVID-19 leave, and whether there was a progression through that, and whether we're seeing people that were in all their leaves. So, and I have not read the answer yet. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, I will forward that email chain to everyone, all of the commissioners, so you all have access to the same information.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is next Tuesday, May 5. And if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting, and see most of you next Tuesday. Thank you.